Start in one minute. Okay, good evening and welcome to the 2021 Holly Springs Candidate Forum. My name is Chris Harrell and I will be your moderator this evening. I'd like to welcome all of our candidates here today. We are going to start with the mayoral debate. So seated to my left is mayoral candidate Christine Kelly and to my right is mayoral candidate Sean Mayewski. I'd also like to thank all of the attendees here today and for your dedication to the town of Holly Springs. I'd like to remind everyone that tonight is a mandatory mask event, especially if you are in the audience. Our candidates may take their mask off while they are seated in there on the stage. So this event is hosted by the Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce. The goal of the candidate forum is to provide a nonpartisan platform for residents to learn about candidates and where each stands on issues that matter most to its residents. The chamber recognizes that municipal elections have a significant impact on our daily lives and encourages voters to reach out to candidates individually with questions or concerns. The chamber does not endorse any candidate. I'd also like to remind everyone this is an event that is being recorded. It is not being livestreamed, but it will be available for viewing on the Chamber of Commerce's YouTube page shortly after the debate is over. Next, I'd like to just go over the flow of the event this evening. We do have a lot to cover this evening. I would like to ask all candidates to be very respectful of the time. Each of you will have somewhere between two to three minutes to answer questions depending on the question. Please, at that two-minute mark, wrap up your question. You can finish your sentence, but please do not go much beyond that. We do have an official timekeeper. Seated to my right is Chris Goines, who will be keeping the time for us this evening. I would like to remind all of the audience members that all the questions tonight will come from me as the moderator. I will be randomly selecting each question. There will be no questions that are coming directly from the audience members tonight. No one has seen these questions in advance. All of these questions are being asked as a surprise to the candidates. They have not time to review these or prepare for the questions that are being asked tonight. Each candidate will begin with a two-minute introduction. Then each will be given two minutes to respond to randomly chosen questions and then there will be a three-minute conclusion. I'd also like to review how the question submission process has worked. Holly Springs residents were invited to submit responses to the question. If you could ask the mayoral candidate one question, what would that be? That question should not be directed to any one candidate and should be general in nature. Members of the chamber of the chamber's Government Relations Committee reviewed submissions and consolidated similar questions to best manage the limited time available. The questions have been printed and placed in a basket for random choosing, and once again, none of the candidates have seen any of the questions. Okay, so let us begin. We are going to begin with the mayoral candidate debate. So I will choose the first candidate to answer a question, which will be Christine Kelly. And the first, oh, I'm sorry, no, no, getting ahead of myself. We are going to let each candidate introduce themselves, sorry. So Christine Kelly, you have two minutes to introduce yourself. Your time begins now.
Thank you, Holly Springs Chamber of Commerce, for putting on this important candidate forum, and Chris Harrell for being our moderator. And I will also share my great appreciation for Sean Mayewski for running for mayor. I'm Christine Kelly, and I'm asking for your support to be the next mayor of Holly Springs. My journey to Holly Springs began in 1992 when a three-month long-distance courtship ended with my husband and I getting engaged and that same weekend finding an ad in the newspaper and buying the house where we live now. It was easy to fall in love with Holly Springs with its small-town spirit and welcoming neighbors. Through the years, I've had two children, John and Bridget, who are now grown. We've had all the opportunities to enjoy a great life here, to live, learn, play, and because of COVID, I now work from home. I'm entering my 30th year at SAS, well, the headquarters in Cary. I've had many customer-facing roles, and I have extensive experience in management, leading teams, and presenting to corporate boardrooms and to conferences. While I've never forgotten my small-business roots growing up and working at our family hotel business in Northern Ontario. I hope you're aware I've served on Town Council since 2017, and I've been, find it very rewarding to serve our town and seen a lot of noticeable changes. I take my Town Council duty seriously. I research for all the decisions that I make, and I work hard to be in the community, to be approachable, and to make sure I represent everyone. I love this town. I believe in our vision, and I know we have more work to do. Three mayors have served our community since 1983, so we are going to be entering a new chapter now. And I hope my work, experience, and my Town Council experience, and my passion for the town, for our businesses and our residents, make it clear that I'm ready to be your next mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Christine. Sean, you will now have two minutes to introduce yourself as well.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. Over the last 10 years, Holly Springs has added over 10,000 residents to its town. My name is Sean Mayewski, and I'm running for mayor of Holly Springs. In 1999, my wife Patricia and I moved to Holly Springs with our three kids. That same year, we started a company called GMA Supply. Apologize, I'll get to why in a minute. As that company, as we grew, as our family grew, so did our business. And realized that I needed to expand and plan for growth, much like the town is doing. In 2004, I moved across the street from what's the business offices by Town Hall into what was then called the Highland Industrial Park. In 2014, again anticipating additional growth, I planned and made use of a three-and-a-half-acre parcel, building a 20,000-square-foot building. As a business owner, you become familiar with growth. You anticipate that growth, much like the town is here. It can provide many challenges, but if anticipated, embraced, and planned for, those opportunities can be something special. Just thinking of the town downtown five years ago. Right now, we have people pushing strollers, walking in and out of restaurants, having adult beverages on the street. Wouldn't have been thought of five years ago, but it sure is fun to watch. As mayor, I plan to work with Town Council and our planning board to continue the responsible growth and keep this small-town feel that we have. I've lived in Holly Springs for 22 years. I can call it my home. In 2014, I was honored, and humbled, by being elected as Holly Springs Citizen of the Year. In business, you learn to work with people to get that ultimate job done. You learn to build bridges, and you learn to work with people. And that's what I plan to do when I get into office. You see, it's easy to get caught up into the politics, but I plan on working with the people in town, the town manager, et cetera, to get the ultimate job done. And that's why I'm running for Holly Springs Town Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Sean. So now I will randomly choose questions. So the first candidate to answer a question will be Ms. Christine Kelly. Christine, how will you work to support and promote both large and small businesses in Holly Springs? You have two minutes.
Thank you. As I've mentioned, I grew up in a small business, so I am aware how difficult it can be, and particularly through COVID, when I was going to visit the businesses, of the day-to-day operations, the cost it takes if you have a company where you're paying rent, paying employees, have costs, and seeing that customers may or may not be coming in because of situations in our town. So I feel like working with the chamber, having their support to help these small businesses, there's a lot of different network groups that can also help them. We need to help our businesses thrive, make sure that we support them, and the town can was also participating in ways that we can go ahead and make sure that we help them through this particular difficult time. In terms of large businesses, I was thrilled to be part of, it took a long while for us to go through the economic development, planning, and acquisition of partnerships with Fujifilm Dyosin and MGEN. And coming from the corporate world, I'm very familiar with what it takes to make sure that we build the best business case for our town and understand, it's usually not just the bottom line, understand what is incentivizing them to come to our town. And what we learned is that we do a lot of things right in Holly Springs. They love our community. They knew that we had a lot of talented people here, were close to schools, and other initiatives that are important to both of them were things that we're doing well here in town, like starting some sustainability initiatives, equity initiatives. So knowing large businesses, they are more than just the bottom line, they're also about the humanity of businesses. And that's where I think that Holly Springs is really growing well and being able to attract those businesses. We have land that is the envy of most other towns. We have momentum that is also the envy of many other communities as well, and support from multi-government levels to make sure that we can grow for both our small and large businesses in town.
Thank you, Christine. Sean, same question. How will you support and promote both large and small businesses in Holly Springs?
Well, as a small-business owner, I'm well aware of many of the things that we need in town. I'd certainly work with our Economic Development Team to get them out and about to, you know, talk about all the wins that we've had here over the recent years. We do have a, we do ride a little wave right now. I'd also work with the Chamber of Commerce. They're a great resource, over 300, 400 people that are businesses that are within that town who are a great voice to also promote and bring this town. I think what we've done downtown is an example, working with the private partnerships has been a great resource, and we'd continue to use that means of enticement to bring businesses to our town. Listen, we've got, we all know what we've got here in town. It's a great community. It's a great business. Those that own the businesses in town know that as well. They're going to be our biggest advocates, so ways to get those folks out to talk about it. The chamber's done some roundtables in the past as an example of discussions and discussing ways to bring businesses into our town. So those would be the things that I would get out and talk about. I think that we've got a lot of land still left in the business park to develop. I'm invested in that and want to see that part grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. All right. This time, we will reverse the order of the questions being answered. So Sean, this is for you. The current landfill odors have been a concern for some time. As mayor, how will you work to resolve this?
Yeah, we've been hearing about this for quite some time, right? I take clients, and we go out, they use this as an example, we take clients out to go eat at a local breakfast joint. When I get out of the car, I know what that smell is, and I know my customers smell it, they may not know what it is. We've got to work with the county. We've got some big companies that are getting ready to come in here, and I can assure you they're not going to enjoy that when they bring their clients in town. I'll do what I can to work with Wake County, and we will solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine, same question.
Oh, I could talk about the landfill for hours. This is definitely a passion of mine. I, I'm a data-driven person. I work at an analytical software company, SAS, and I have asked for all the data from 2016 of all the odor complaints, put it into dataset, coded it, and looked to see what the trends are. I could see year over year where even last year, we had over 6,000 complaints, which has been the maximum we've had for our town, and gone through the effort to even see where the complaints coming from. I was able to see by neighborhood, that neighborhoods like Arbor Creek and 12 Oaks are particularly suffering from odor complaints. So there's been some ideas in the past that, you know, the odor was only around the landfill, and, you know, what can we do? Well, the odor is actually permeating throughout town, and you can smell in different ways. So through the work that I've had and sharing it with Matt Calabria and other commissioners, the county and GFL have been meeting with us monthly with town staff and our new Sustainability Manager, where we've been real, real about the problems with the landfill and saying, you know, I understand the operations from the landfill perspective, you're doing it well from that perspective, but the quality of life of those in Holly Springs are suffering. So through those monthly meetings, we've been able to get some progress in getting a second weather station. We're planning some E nose technology so that the burden will not just be on our residents to file odor complaints, that the landfill needs to be monitoring their own complaints there. We are looking to see, Wake County is investigating, putting a $4 million investment on an interim cover to cover some of the areas of the landfill that have been closed, which should also make a remarkable difference. GFL itself has changed the size of the landfill. They are actually covering, instead of like last year this time, they were covering with at 9:30 at night, they're now covering at 4:30. So they've invested millions of dollars as well for hiring and equipment. So we are making progress with the landfill, and I plan to continue making more inroads with Wake County so we can solve this for our residents.
Thank you very much, Christine. Okay, we'll now wrap up the mayoral debate. So you'll each be given three minutes to conclude the debate and ask voters for their vote. We will start with you, Christine. Your time begins now.
Well, thank you for those submitted questions. We had some great ones today, and I actually would have loved to talk about more. I think we're just scratching the surface of important issues to you all. And I hope this is the beginning of a dialogue that we can start from here until November 2nd, so I can share my ideas of the town. Well, I've touched on a few things. I want to highlight the things that I'm most proud of. Since I've served on Town Council, in the areas of sustainability, environmental, and quality of life, I've championed for move forward, having Holly Springs become a Tree City USA community, and also updated ordinances for tree protection. I've supported further parks and rec investments, including more greenways, improved park facilities, and a new park on the west side of town, which is 56 acres, which is exciting. I've supported updating our ordinances for greater historical preservation and efforts to raise the visibility of our town's history, including the history of our Black community. I spent countless hours, I just talked about doing odor report analysis and working with Wake County and GFL to improve the landfill. I support improved town services and excellence in town operations and securing a better tax base. I've been a big advocate for updating the plans that drive our town's decisions towards new development. Since I've been on council, we've updated our strategic plan, our mission and vision statements, our comprehensive plan, our parks and rec master plan, and that is just to name a few. I've supported the transportation bond that was passed in 2018, and I worked on the project team that helped put that, the bond information together for voters to vote on. I'm on the Steering Committee for the Unified Development Ordinance Update, a project where we know we need to modernize, and I proudly supported the housing affordability study that was passed last night at Town Council. I've supported our town's efforts to change the tax base from an 80/20 ratio to a 70/30 residential-commercial ratio. Recent additions of small businesses and the new economic development deals with Fujifilm Dyosin and MGEN are getting us closer to that goal. Commercial tax dollars will help us fund the needs of our town better. I'm proud that we are consistently ranked as the safest city in North Carolina, and I fully support the recommendations from staff to invest in our police and fire departments. I still believe there's work to be done, and I, and the work won't be done until everybody feels safe. So I've been the one to lead the town to look at bringing in body cameras for our police, which will be implemented this year with work with lots of folks on, in the departments. Our town operations have seen growth as well. We've modernized some of our systems, made key strategic staff hires, and all in an effort to better serve our residents and our businesses. There's more work to do, and I'm ready to do it. I'm prepared to make the transition from Town Council to mayor. I hope you see that I'm ready, committed to our community, and I want to advocate for our town. I hope you will support me as your new mayor.
Thank you, Christine. Sean, same question.
Thank you, Chris Harrell. Appreciate you doing this, and it was first time out. I think Tim Conklin has some competition now, my friend. So I thank you all for all coming out and getting engaged in your community. I appreciate my family. Thank my wife for coming out. Within 24 hours, with the past 24 hours, she just lost her mother to COVID, but it's our commitment to the town that we love that we're in. Appreciate, appreciate y'all and my family being here. I'm running for mayor because I am concerned about the direction of the town. We've got our current mayor, Sears, who's retiring after 20 years of hard work, which we thanked him for. I'm also appreciative that the mayor's endorsed me as of yesterday, and I thank him for that endorsement. You know, the reason I'm running for mayor is that I've called Holly Springs home. I built a business here. Our family was raised here. Our kids went to every single school that's been here as they grew up. You see, my name's Sean Mayewski, and I'm hoping that I'll get your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, so that will conclude our mayoral portion of the debate. So the mayoral candidates can exit the stage, and we will have our Town Council members Okay, thank you, everyone, for taking the stage. We will begin the Town Council portion of the evening now. We do thank all of our Town Council members, Kristy Bennett, Dan Berry, Jamar Cobb, Tim Forrest, and Carrie Dean Randa. So we will follow the same exact format we just did with the mayoral debate. So the first question or the first entry here is to just give a two-minute intro of why the residents of Holly Springs should vote for you. So I once again select the candidates in random order. So the first Town Council member to answer will be Dan Berry.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Berry. In 2017, you elected me to reclaim the direction of Holly Springs' future. I've served on the Town Council for the last four years, and I've been mayor pro temp since 2019, a role that saw me represent the town on several state-level issues and huge announcements for the town in the last few months. I'm a prior Holly Springs Planning Board member. My wife and I and our three children have been residents of Holly Springs, well, my wife and I for nine years, the kid's only for three now. We've been residents and taxpayers of Holly Springs for nine years. I'm a former HOA president and a former volunteer firefighter. I also served two years as an Executive Board Vice President for the fire company. Professionally, I am a global finance controller at a large technology company. As your councilman, I've dug into and solved inefficient town processes, instituted a rolling schedule of updates for our major growth plans. This allows us to make decisions off of a current vision for the town and represent all members of our growing community. I've pushed the envelope to encourage non-residential growth to balance our tax base. I've consistently asked developers tough questions, leading to better-quality projects that provide a benefit for residents, not a detriment. It's been an honor and privilege to represent you and serve the last four years. Tonight, I look forward to showing you why I'm the most qualified candidate to continue serving in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate is Kristy Bennett.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the town for putting this event on because so much work goes on behind the scenes of an event like this, so thank you very, very much. My name is Kristy Bennett. My husband David and I have three kids. They are nine, seven, and almost four. We moved here seven years ago last month and have never looked back. When my husband's job opportunity looked like it was B. in Fayetteville, I said, "You can commute, because I am not leaving." And that was when we had only lived here for about four months. Since coming to town, I have built my own business, serving hundreds of women in our community. We have raised our kids, moved jobs, bought our first home, and we even recruited other family members to come live here, too. I love it here. I love my neighbors. I love our small-town feel, even as we grow. The longer I live here, the more I want to be involved and give back. I am an active member of my church, where I serve in the public affairs role, and I'm a leader in our community outreach group called Just Serve. I'm a founding member of the Holly Springs Interfaith Alliance, where we bring our unique beliefs and talents together to work towards common goals. And I would love the opportunity to bring that mission statement to the Town Council, where I could further serve the community. The most important things in my life are God and family, and keeping those priority first, priorities first, has never steered me wrong before. I would love to continue to serve this community, provide a different perspective on the council as a young mom of three, bring in some fresh energy, some ideas and initiative to the table, and keep Holly Springs the family-friendly town we all know and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Tim Forrest, you have two minutes.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening. I would like to thank the chamber for hosting this event. I'm Tim Forrest, and since 2011, my wife and family have lived here, and I'd like to take a moment to thank my wife again for supporting me through all my endeavors. We've called Holly Springs home since 2011. Our boys have attended the Holly Grove Network all the way up through Holly Springs High School. We continue to enjoy Holly Springs. I have served the town of Holly Springs in the Board of Adjustments now since 2018. I currently serve as the chairperson of the board, which is interesting. It's a board that is quasi-judicial, so the town has entrusted us to make decisions that are important to the town, and if they are appealed by us, they go to the Ninth Circuit Court. Why is that important? I think you'll see later. So currently, I am the CEO of a disabled veteran-owned business called Patchmaster. We do drywall repair, but the intent of the operation, the business is driven to take veterans and give them an opportunity to work. Those are one thing, it's one thing that I find very rewarding after a 30-year Army career myself and retiring as a Colonel, engineer Colonel, which is important to town operations. And so with that said, we continue to give back, both in the Charlotte and the Raleigh markets, with this business. Other things I'm into is I was HOA Board President for my neighborhood, as well as I currently serve on the district chair, as a district chair for the Boy Scouts or Scouts BSA, as well as also serve in local events such as Sleep and Heavenly Peace, which builds beds for kids, as well as we support plenty of nonprofits in the area. Matter of fact, this last weekend, we were trying to balance door-knocking with delivering meals from Main Street Kitchen. Wow, that was quick. Thank you.[1618.22][1618.22][laughter]
Candidate Jamar Cobb, you are next.
Well, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for allowing this event to take place, and certainly to our mayor, and to all of you that are here on this evening, to all of our candidates as well. So my name is Jamar Cobb. I am a native of Holly Springs. My family has been in this community for over 40 years. And so being from the grassroots of Holly Springs, I've seen our town grow and expand from less than 700 residents to 42,000 and counting. With that expansion, and over the years, as a native, rather, one of the things that I possess is eyewitness point of view and perspective. I've seen our growth from eyewitness account. I remember at this location, this was our town park. In addition to that, I remember and recall when we built the first food line under, of course, the leadership of our great mayor. I can even reflect when Holly Springs only had one, not even functional, stoplight.[1688.32][1688.32][laughter] As a native, I attended also Holly Springs Elementary School when that school was first built. I've worked in our town as a man of action. I have been involved with our subtask force for the landfill committee. Also, in addition to that, to the, I've worked on the comprehensive, excuse me, transportation planning steering committee as well. I have also worked and attended many events within our town. I participated in the MLK celebrations, as well as marches and activities as it relates to the justice for our citizens. And lastly, as a man of faith, I have been a faith leader in this community for over 15 years. I pastor a church, which I have just celebrated two years on Sunday for the, so I've been passing the church for two years, and I hope and I trust that the citizens of Holly Springs will welcome me as their candidate.
Thank you. Finally, Carrie Dean Randa.
Thank you, and I want to start, I'm Carrie Randa, I'm asking for your vote for Town Council, and I do want to thank the chamber, I want to thank everybody for coming. This is an amazing turnout that I was not expecting, so I'm excited to see so many people here. I'm a lawyer, I'm a mom, I'm a wife, and I'm a 16-year resident of Holly Springs. I moved to Holly Springs to attend Campbell University Law School in 2005, and I decided to stay. I loved it that much. I got my first job as a prosecutor in Hornet County, and instead of living down in Lillington, I decided I'd go ahead and just do the commute, it was not so bad, and I stayed in Holly Springs. I bought my first house in Holly Springs. I changed a few jobs, have done a few different roles as an attorney, met my husband, got married in Holly Springs. We now have a child, he's five. We now have a child, he's five. He just started kindergarten. He was born in Cary, but lives in Holly Springs. We bought a new house recently. We needed an upgrade with the kid and all of his things, and that's in Holly Springs. And so I'm invested in this community. I believe in this community. I've enjoyed this community. I've grown up myself in this community and really feel like I've become an adult in this community. Running for town council because I don't completely see myself reflected in the current town council. I don't know that the town council looks like the community and the citizens of Holly Springs, and I think I bring a fresh perspective. As a professional working mom and a wife, as someone who's had a lot of different experiences, I think I can bring something different to the town council and represent a good majority of the community that's not completely currently represented on the council. As a 16-year resident, I've seen extensive growth, and I think it's really important as a town council member, I want to focus on people and progress. I want to drill down into what the community needs, access for the community, and sustainability initiatives. So I'm asking for your vote for town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the question-answer of the session here. Once again, I will choose the candidates and questions at random. So first question is for Jamar Cobb. The question is, if elected, how will you support local business? You have two minutes.
Well, my whole campaign and my platform, shall I say, is involved with three things, the first being commitment. I believe that as, I don't view this-